All right, you can start.
Leading everybody. We're going to call the meeting to order. We have the approval of the agenda for the Stone Mills Register Council Meeting of June 50, 2020. Moved by John, seconded by Kevin. Any questions on the agenda? All favor the motion, carry. John, can you hear me? Yeah, if when you put your hand up on your, you did before is dark background. If you put it up on the other side, I can see it like that. Thank you. Okay, no delegations. Okay, the minutes, look for approval of minutes of June 1st, 2019, Stone Mills Register Council Meeting. Need a mover. Moved by Sherry, seconded by Kevin. Any questions or comments? All favor the motion. Motion's carried. Thank you. No delegations, deputations. We're going to go down to staff reports. Manager Planning Deputy Clerk saying, Report XCG pertaining to review of the hydro. Report of the application SP 42019. Go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Your Worship. We're all familiar with this file. Slack Family Farms. Application to construct a hog farm just west of, of Arensville. And many of you are also familiar with the fact that the township conducted a subsequent peer review of the hydrogeological work that was completed by Melros Engineering in support of the proposed hog operation presented by Slack Family Farms. So, before I get into this and the, the copy of the XCG peer review has been made public through our agenda tonight. And one of the unique factors of, of what XCG had the ability to do at this stage of a peer review was they had the unique ability to look at the entirety of the application. So, just to rewind through a processing of an application, when an applicant submits all material, a peer review could commence on the material that's submitted. But fast forward into this situation, a peer review of the hydrogeology study has the ability to take into account the draft site plan control agreement that we've the draft that was presented, the final that was approved by council. The, the consultants, the peer reviewers have the ability to look at all the technical comments that were provided by not only just Quinte Conservation and their hydrogeologist Mark Boone, but also all the comments received from any other agency or technical reviewer included within, as well as all of the information submitted by the applicant. So it was a very fulsome review. And I just say that because it is unique in it, in that regard. So as many of you have probably read, there are some components of their X, of XCG summary that they seek the applicant to go above and beyond, to which the peer reviewer of Mark Boone and Quinney Conservation had requested. And section three, sub one is the most notable from my regard in that they're asking, or they're suggesting, I should say, that the applicant demonstrated 24-hour pump test to a maximum of 28,000 liters per day as opposed to the hydrogeology recommendation of Mark Boone and Quinney Conservation at a 14,500-liter pump test spread over a 12-hour period. Now, just for some background as to why Quinney Conservation put forth the 14,500 at a 12-hour pump test, as that is the number specified through OMAFRA that the barn, the livestock facility is calculated to require in supporting the development that's being proposed. So doubling the output on a test from a pump, from a, from a well water analysis is, I don't want to say arbitrary because I'm not a hydrogeologist, but I would say, yes, it's above and beyond what is anticipated of being needed for that onsite development. I can go through all of these. There are some, some nuances that XCG has noted that Melros failed to include in their hydrogeology assessment that specifically, you know, groundwater flow patterns that were, could have been included as well as some drawdown measures and other factors such as where's the water pumped out to during that 12-hour pump test. The other most notable comment I would say is the baseline study recommendation, and we taught, touched on that a little bit in our earlier information session scheduled ahead of this meeting. Mr. Boone provided, I thought of a, a well illustrated answer to that question in that, in schedule E of our draft, sorry, of our final site plan control agreement. We have factored in the necessity of the applicant to understand and conduct that baseline assessment of neighboring wells. So the XCG is, is, I would say commenting slash commending that. So again, just moving forward, that was the hydro G assessment. The XCG consultants had the opportunity to review both the site plan control agreement and they do not see any, any significant inclusions that need to be added within other than to that 28,000 liters threshold as well as the sorry, the Melros study, and that, that was all covered as well in my, in my comment. So again, this is, this was not something that was required by staff to the applicant in terms of an expense. This was conducted more in-house to understand that the, to valid, validate, sorry, the information that has been incorporated as well as the recommendations that have been put forth prior to staff being up against its legislated timeframe of issuing a building permit. So it was, it was important to have this work done. And we felt tonight was a very good form to bring that forward and put that in the public size to, to our, to the information work that we're putting out from a, from a public perspective. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the study and, and go from there. Thanks.
Any questions for Jason? Kevin and then John. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, Jason, um, would that be a normal request on a, on a for that pumping to be doubled like that on any other farm issue or anything like that? Or is it just, is it just, they're looking at it saying, well, you could do this and double it up?
Through, through you, Mr. Chair, it'd be my, my comment would be, it would be a, a nice to have option to suggest that you double it up. As I mentioned, really the recommendation included within, it was pumped to what the barn is proposed to use from a water yield perspective. And this would be doubling of that.
And, and that would be from OMAFRA or that type of, that would be calling for that pump, or for that much water, right?
So to the requirement of, so 14,500 liters per day, OMAFRA has dictated or sort of illustrates that to be what is predicted or projected to be needed to supply the animals in that barn. This XCG recommendation of 28,000 liters a day would be doubling of what OMAFRA's projected use of water would be.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, John, you're next.
Yes, thank you. So in terms of what we do with XCG's study here, can we impose this as a condition or is it too late to do that? Or if, if we can't do that, can we approach Mark Slack and say, would you be willing to, to change the the conditions in, in section E to include the XCG recommendation? Great, Jason?
Great, great question, Deputy Revisers. I think that's exactly it there to the end. The applicant had demonstrated his satisfaction with all the conditions imposed through the processing of the application and the recommendations put forward within. Now this request to essentially double that would be a conversation that need to be had between the applicant and staff and/or the municipality for that, to amend the approved site plan control agreement and update it with these conditions. I just would also point out, many of you may be aware through previous correspondence, sorry. The applicant is the only individual has the ability to appeal a site plan control application. And some may say, why would an applicant appeal? It is their ability to appeal based on unsatisfaction related to conditions incorporated within. So it, it's not as though it's a member of the public necessarily launching appeal under the planning act. It would be an applicant's appeal to, related to conditions.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Doug, you're next.
Yeah. Jason, back to the XCG report. Section three, item five, the Quinney Conservation Recommendation of the Baseline Study on February 12th. That is in, sorry, that is in the original conditions. That section five is referring to doing the study on all the village wells.
Yeah. Through you, Your Worship, through your worship. Section three, sub five of the XCG. I'm looking at my site plan control agreement. Section E subsection 15 speaks to, I'll read the condition just, just so we're all clear. The owner acknowledges and agrees to complete a baseline well water inventory and water quality survey of residents immediately surrounding the proposed barn and storage facilities on adjacent properties in accordance with the recommendations of an original oh one, prior oh one report prior to the issuance or occupancy of the proposed barn. This survey would provide detail regarding neighboring properties, well water and lab analysis of the water quality samples. The survey is to include notification and attendance of all the properties within 500 meters of the proposed livestock facility and extend to the properties immediately adjacent to the down gradient, which is the eastern property boundary. Should the neighboring property owners decline to participate in such a baseline study, this will need to be recorded and provided in writing. So just to, to confirm to Counselor Davison's question, condition five of the XCG subsection three subsection five has been incorporated already in that site plan control agreement. Yes.
Thank you, Jason. There's a lot of community concern around their well. So that, that is a bright thing in it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Wendy, your hand up. Can't hear you.
Yes, quickly, two things. Jason, you talked about legislative timeframe for the building permit. What is that timeframe?
Through you, Mr. Chair, my, my colleague is sitting right here. He correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's 20 days to issue a building permit. The building permit was submitted May 20th, I believe. So 20 days takes us to the middle of this week. I think we've got June 17th circled on the calendar, but I can confirm all those numbers as, if we need.
Second question, I guess this is to counsel. I can, I can delay this discussion until item 11 or 10 maybe items for consideration, but we just came out of a special meeting where the public has put forward a request. And we did get an answer from the proponent. However, we also got a comment from Mark Boone saying that there are regulations to address setbacks and how interesting he found this. And the water courses had not been identified when they were looking at this application. So I'm wondering if we should be having Quinte Conservation Authority come out and see if those waterways address the regulations that Mark was referring to. So I, I guess I want to, I don't know, make a motion or have a discussion about those water courses, the stream and the wetlands and the setbacks, the regulatory setbacks, which were not identified in the original submission or from the agencies that looked at it. I think Mark said he would be interested in looking at it.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I wasn't exactly clear from what Mark said. He said they had identified some water courses. He also said he wasn't aware of some, or perhaps one of the ones that Susan Moore, Susan Moore's colleague, I forget who she said it was, a retired professor, had identified on the property, I guess from aerial photos or what have you. At this point, the site plan application has already been approved. Before we talk about motions to have that revisited, I would like to hear from Jason as to the feasibility of reopening the site plan for such an investigation at this point.
Go ahead, Jason.
Through, through you, I think in my eyes, what that would look like would be a, a very direct conversation with the applicant as to what their willingness would be to amend special conditions included within, delay issuance of a building permit and essentially rescind our originally approved site plan control agreement that has been entered into. It's a question full-heartedly that I think is one for lawyer, legal counsel to answer as it relates to the liability that the municipality would be put in in rescinding a previously approved site plan agreement. And when I say rescind, maybe a strong word, but pausing to allow for additional work. I, I honestly, I would defer to, to them aside from having the applicant's willingness to conduct that suspension so that that additional work could be done. As I, as I previously noted, that's where the appeal rights rest.
Go ahead, John.
So I think you said in, in your response, Jason, that it to actually amend it at this point would require the consent of the applicant. However, that doesn't mean that we can't ask Mark Boone and Quinney Conservation to expand on on his comment that he wasn't aware of some of the water courses or perhaps a water course that Susan Moore had identified. So there would certainly be no harm in, in contacting Mark and asking him if he felt that he should have another look at, at the water courses, perhaps in consultation with Susan Moore's expert and get back to us and let us know if he thinks that there was a serious omission in his hydrogy analysis. And if, if that seems like a reasonable approach, I would even make that a motion.
Jake, do you have something to say there first?
Yeah, just quickly on that. Thank you. Further to that comment in our information session when we were seeking clarification from Chief Building Official Detler as it relates to the ability to rescind a building permit after it's been issued. There was some conversation in that dialogue that revolved around, you know, inadequate concrete that was, that was put into place during construction. I just wanted to provide, tie that back into this comment as it relates to Quinney Conservation's comment of potentially another water course that was not discovered onsite through the work that was already completed. To Chief Building Official Detler's requirement of ensuring that all applicable law is satisfied prior to the issuance of a permit, there would be the necessity to confirm that that building satisfies all the required setbacks and provisions of the bylaw. Now, if the question of water course on, on, on the subject property and its ability or potential effect on the hydro G study, I would say that has been incorporated within the hydrogeology work to date. But if the question revolves more around, and I may have missed this from Mrs. Moore's presentation, revolves more around the applicability of that adhere, of that proposal adhering to all applicable law. That is something that would be included and encompassed within the building permit review that needs to be adhered to prior to the issuance of the permit.
Jake, do you have something there?
Yeah, I was just, um, just hearing what Jason was saying. It's really interesting. Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but he'd have to maintain that 30 meters to any, any setback and, and to any water course. I, I don't think, because I've walked the site, that, that, that is going to be anywhere within that 30 meters to a wetland. The site's kind of on a, on a hill. I mean, I was kind of hoping to, to tell counsel tonight that, you know, I'm on the clock and the clock expires this week. Either, either we need to rescind the site plan control bylaw or I have to physically issue a permit here at some point. That was just the message that I was going to. Section 8.2 of the Building Code Act basically lists all the things that, that I have as reasons to deny a building permit. And nowhere on that list is there a role for counsel. So if I'm to not issue this permit, something has to happen. And, and, and maybe the finding of a new water course or something could be used, but I mean, if that water course is outside of that 30 meters like it is anticipated, then I'm not really sure that that would stop me from issuing the permit.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Well, yeah, I, I just wanted to reiterate what her lawyer had told us before, that if you try and stop the process, then we're going to lose on that. And I just want people to realize that too, that we have located through the site plan through council. It is a go. And as, as Jake has said, he can't stop that process because we have some opposition to this. And I don't believe that we can do that legally without, without Mr. Slack. And, and as he has pointed out, he's went above and beyond some of the things that he needed to do or, or so he's saying, and I, I believe he has. So I, with our lawyer's advice there, I, I just want to put that out there for people to consider.
I guess to follow up on the, those comments there, like Jake said there, if it's, if it was within this 30 meters, well, they're going to raise a red, red flag and they're going to stop them. From what I can get out of that. You know, so I mean, we have the opportunity to stop that municipality or building inspector. And I'm sure not just because, excuse me, just because there's little, little adjustments on a lot of site plans and that, but water is a crucial, crucial thing here. But I, I sort of have to agree with Jake on this, you know, if, if there's something there, fine, but if there isn't, we just can't go with something. Go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Your Worship. I, I just wanted to provide a little bit more information to what Counsel Richmond was saying in his recap of our legal position from Mr. Fleming. So as we are aware, the LPAT decision, or sorry, the appeal rights for site plan control rests with an applicant. And the LPAT decision or the appeal would go to the local planning appeals tribunal, which is basically the new Ontario Municipal Board for that matter. If we found ourselves in such a position based on council, I just want to play this out for a second. If, if we found ourselves in such a position due to council refusing to grant site plan control approval to Mr. Slack, Mr. Slack would have three hydrogeologists as technical experts on his side, under expert witness who would be subpoenaed. He would have myself as a planner. He would have OMAFRA, who has already issued the nutrient management strategy approval. And I have not yet heard to date a technical expert who is contesting any of the technical merit to a simple, or sorry, a specific inclusion within this site plan control agreement. So I'm, I'm struggling to understand who would defend council's decision at an LPAT hearing to, to a, an application that would be refused. For that reason, I would also like to point out that myself, although employed by the municipality, I would be sitting and subpoenaed by the applicant in defending the position that I put forth to council in the site plan control agreement. So council would be obligated to hire outside planning services as well as outside legal counsel because Mr. Fleming has also already been a part of the site plan control agreement and presented to you on multiple occasions. I just wanted to provide that as an information piece to, to that of what Mr., sorry, not Mr. Counselor Richmond had mentioned. Further to that, also included within our site plan control agreement that has been approved and has been signed and entered into to date, there is the conditions of additional work that need to be done prior to the issuance of occupancy. That additional work essentially ends, and you're happy to take it to the section, schedule E subsection 14. The conditions end with the wording to the satisfaction of Quinte Conservation. That's a pretty broad term. And, and I think we need to take some confidence and have some, have some serious consideration with our colleagues at Quinney, not our colleagues, but our, who have a part accompanied us through the processing of this file to say that to the satisfaction of Quinte Conservation means that they will uphold to their best ability, the public interest. And they will do their best to ensure that every requirement that needs to be satisfied will be satisfied. So again, I, I do, I just wanted to, to mention that and, and provide that overview.
I think Doug has his hand up first, Wendy. Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, I just, a quick question is too bad. We're at the 11th hour and we don't have the luxury of time. It's unfortunate we didn't take that time maybe at the beginning. But a quick question, as I watched Susan's presentation in the map and Mark Boone's comments on it, I didn't see that Mark was saying that there was a different water course. I kind of interpreted to be that there was the water course that Susan was showing was larger or longer or whatever than what he had referred to. My guess, my quick question is, is there any chance that we could get Mark just because unless we put this to bid, it will never be solved. Is there any chance that Mark could attend the property tomorrow morning and just verify whether or not that court, that, what the boundaries of that stream is, whether it has any impact? And I recognize what Jason says. It wasn't recognized earlier, but because Susan brought it up, unless it's verified one way or the other, it probably will not disappear. And, you know, it's, it, unless Marcus tied grade up solid, you know, if we could get them for a couple hours in the morning, we would have put it to bed first.
Go ahead, Wendy.
Yeah, thanks, Doug. I think that's a really good idea. I just want to put it out there that maybe it's sounding like I'm, I'm against this. I just want to put it out there that maybe it's sounding like I'm, I'm against this proponent submission. And I'm really not, I'm really not. This new information though about the water courses that weren't mentioned in, in the Omafra or the Ministry of Environment Conservation and Parks. And Quinte is just, just an interesting sidebar, but the, the comment that Mark made was regulations to address setbacks. And I'm very comfortable that what Jake is saying is right, but I would like to have the authorities that we've been seeking all through this process to confirm that and to help Jake to feel confident that when he when he agrees to, when he agrees to that building permit, that he's absolutely confident that we're not breaking any regulations with setbacks to this fairly newly discovered stream that leads into Beaver Lake. So if Mark Boone is available, I think that's a great idea. And then we can hopefully put this to rest.
Go ahead, John.
Yes, thank you. We're assuming that there actually is a newly discovered stream. We, we don't know if that's the case. That's something that somebody has drawn on a map. If there is, then it's, it's certainly of interest. I don't think we're so desperately pressed for time, Doug. As Jake has, has pointed out, and I think Jason too, if, if any errors or omissions are discovered, regardless of whether a building permit has been issued or not, they have to be addressed. So the deadline of the building permit doesn't mean that, that if Mark isn't available tomorrow or Wednesday or whenever, we can't ask him to have a look at Susan's information. And if necessary, attended the property. And if he discovers that some further setback is required, then it will have to be done because that would be a technical error or omission. And as Jake and Jason have both indicated, if something like that is found, even if the building permit has already been issued, then the process, then the situation has to be corrected. So don't get hung up on this building permit. At any time, the, the project can be halted or a request can be made based on new technical information. The project can be modified. So I would move that staff contact Mark at Quinte Conservation, Mark Boone, and, and ask him if, if he thinks that there's information there from, from Susan Moore and the, and the concerned citizens group that warrants further investigation from a hydro geological standpoint, that he consult with them and then report back to us and let us know if there is something there that he, he regards as, as important that should be addressed. It doesn't matter if it happens tomorrow, Wednesday, or, or a week after if the building permit's issued. It will have to be addressed if it means that there was a mistake in the original hydro G study. So that's my motion. In a nutshell, contact Mark Boone, have him investigate what appears to be new information regarding a water course and to let us know if that warrants a change in the, in the conditions.
Okay, we have a mover by John Secunder. Kevin, you second that? Okay, second. Any more questions or comments on this? Do you have something to say, Doug, before we vote?
Yes, I do. In reference to John's comments, and I don't disagree with what John says, but I do believe there is a bit of urgency. John may be 100% right according to the law. But according to the rule of common opinion, people, if they have the feeling that you're not listening or not trying to address their concerns, they come away with a negative impact. And my point here is if we could get Mark out there tomorrow to look at it prior to the issuance of the permit, then you would go a long ways to let the community know that you listened. And because, and there's times I, I don't believe the community believes that we, that the council has listened. And we're splitting hairs here now when we can stop it after or before. Why not just try to do it now? That's my position. I would like to see it done now.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Doug. It's a perception issue. So I'll, I will modify my motion to, that we ask Mark to do what my, my original note, my original motion requested and to add that if possible, that he could attend to this in the next day or two. So it's an as soon as possible request.
Okay, just a second, Jake. Are you comfortable moving that motion, Kevin?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good. Okay, so we're going to get down to Jake here. Go ahead, Jake.
If I could just add one thing, Mark Boone is a hydrologist that, that, that usually sits in an office and analyzes reports and, and identifying wetlands and the edges of wetlands is usually other employees that are out doing that every day for Quinney Conservation. I don't know if you need to put Mark Boone in your motion, John. I think Darcy Clow or another employee like that that does that every day would work just as well.
Go ahead, John.
Then we can rephrase the motion just to read appropriate employee of Quinte Conservation. I know Paul McCollough can do that.
Okay, Kevin?
Agreed.
Are any more comments on this motion? And we're called all favor of the motion? Motion's carried. Anybody opposed? I guess Debbie, your hand didn't come up. That's okay. All right. So any more discussion? Now that was a motion that within this the high G study. Anybody else? Any comments before I have a motion to receive the report? Okay, so I look for a motion to receive the report. Move by Kevin, second by Sherry. All in favor of the motion? Motion's carried. Thank you. Okay, Treasury Bousha, Stone Mills Township, accounts are payable.
Hi, so you have in front of you the May accounts payable and peril reports.
Any questions for Christina? Wendy?
Yes, I do, but I just get me, give me a second to open it. I think it's right near the end. Christina was just, oh, darn it. Sorry, guys. You know what? I, I don't see, I had marked it up and I don't see it here. Maybe I can just call you tomorrow. Is that okay?
No problem.
Okay. So I just, I, I had marked it up and I, I don't see my markings on it right now. Okay.
The other question? I have a motion to receive the report and pay the bill. Move by Kevin, second by Sherry. All in favor? Carried. Resolution to authorize transition of Scotiabank as previously approved by council. Go ahead, Christina.
So the attached resolution is requested from our new banking partners, Scotiabank. We would have done this when we originally signed up with CIBC, but we have moved our bank and we need this on file.
Go ahead, Wendy.
Motion to approve.
Move approved, second by Doug. Any questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say we lost John, but there he is in the middle there now. Removed your round on the screen, John. It's Theo Brooks. We're going to have notice of information from multi-community virtual Canada Day celebration be presented by Cindy Height. Welcome aboard, Cindy.
Yeah, thank you for having me. We have decided because our normal Canada Day celebrations cannot be done this year because of the restrictions. We have partnered with the Town of Greater Napanee, Tainanega Township and the Town of Deseronto to do a collective Canada Day celebration virtually on Facebook. It's called Canada Day 2020 Communities Connected. We are going to be providing information about family activities that can be done from home, family scavenger hunts using Canadian themed items, decorating your front porch and providing a picture on the Facebook page with your address if you choose to. And then they're going to be mapping out a self-guided tour for people to go around to. Base painting, flowers, that sort of thing. If you have a special tradition for Canada Day baking, to take a picture of it and post your recipe to the Facebook page. There will also be running ads to promote the event on my FM. They were to start this week and there's some other things that are going to be coming up that they want to kind of surprise and do teasers as we go and leading up to July first. So they're encouraging residents to use the hashtag keeping it Canadian in order to, to collect those in, onto the page so everybody can see the Canadian spirit and to bring some happiness for Canada Day, since it won't be what we all are used to.
Good. Any questions for Cindy?
Any questions?
I have a motion to receive the report. Move by Debbie, second by Wendy. All in favor? Carrie, thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
Council update to intend pro, process for local restaurants to receive encroachment agreements to accommodate outside patios during the current COVID-19 phase two restriction. Go ahead, Brian.
Your worship, we wanted to provide an update this evening just to give council members an opportunity to become aware of what the process will be for this. So as most are aware, early last week, the province provided the opportunity for applicants to open up on the condition that they had outdoor patios. So the intent is under delegated authority. We wanted to provide notice to make sure that we weren't entering into something that was totally foreign to council, that our planning staff, building and public work staff were going to be working with applicants, mostly food serving establishments to provide opportunity for outdoor patios. In some cases, that does mean the use of municipal sidewalks and alterations that will accommodate those, but it will allow them to open up at least in a, in a minimal capacity until which time the restrictions are, are further lifted to allow them to get back to what we refer to as their previous normal operations. To date, there's probably three applications and requests in with the municipality to start the process for that with one already issued, meaning they have a patio on their property and just wanted a letter stating that we didn't have any objections to, to that operation commencing. So if there are any objections from council, we wanted to make sure that it was an opportunity to get those ironed out this evening prior to us starting the formation of those agreements.
I guess, Brian, just one question. How long do you say people apply? Is it going to take very long before we can okay this, like to get them going?
We're hopeful that it'll be very quickly. There's a general consensus that as long as, you know, we can maintain the safe pass through of pedestrian traffic, that we could do these relatively quickly. And I know that the three, three department managers have made some site visits to, to discuss some potential ideas. They don't see any, anything that would prohibit it from happening. It might be a small accommodation that requires, you know, things like insurance accommodation to make sure that they have suitable increased insurance policies for that type of operation and acknowledge the encroachment agreement with their insurance provider. So it's, it's mostly street front restaurants that are looking for some additional opportunity to have some sort of sit down serving capacity rather than just the takeout option.
Any questions for Brian? Motion to receive the report. Move by John, second by Sherry. All in favor? Carrie, thanks, Brian. Okay, Public Works Manager Thompson, notice of tender for the reconstruction of Brock and Durham Street.
Thank you, Reeve Smith. This report is for information only. A tender has been put out for the reconstruction of Durham Street and Brock. The tender will close on July sixth. The report will follow that on July thirteenth for council's consideration, depending on the, the pricing that we get back in from general contractors. Any questions on that?
Any questions? Go ahead, John.
Yeah, Jeff, what's our, our grant funding situation on that project at the moment? Sorry, Jeff.
Right, right now, we're, so the, the project was, not to say too much, but the project was kind of split into two, underground and above ground, where the above ground work was funded through the program. So we, we were successfully getting that, that funding. The underground is at municipal cost, so this tender split in two sections, a section A and a section B. The A being the above ground and the, the A being the above ground, the B being the underground work. So financially, I, I, I don't know where numbers will come in at. I hear that there's some shortage for some contractors out there, so hopefully we, we get some decent numbers back in.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Jeff, is, is any of that work going to your guys or our staff? Or were we able to do that?
As of three weeks ago, maybe four, we were denied to do, use any of our own forces. We've reached out to some of our federal and provincial representatives to kind of help us out to get some relief on that. So we're still waiting, waiting to hear on that. But with, with the time, the timeframe, the work was to be completed in 2020 with all financials being in in March 2021. So we're in July now. We're, we're running out of time.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, so if I'm hearing you right, Jeff, when we get the tender, we'll have to make a decision on where, what the cost is, whether we can afford it or not.
That's correct. So we'll have our percentage of the above ground work to pay. I think it's sixteen point nine percent, right around there, and the 100% cost of the underground. But until we get the tenders back in, I, I'd be guessing it, telling you what they are.
Any more questions? Okay, looking for a motion to receive the report. Move by Doug, second by Debbie. All in favor? Carrie. Twenty twenty surplus equipment. Go ahead, Jeff.
So this is just to get council approval for surplus equipment, two tandems that are currently for parts only. I think we have to pull them out of the shop. One's already out of the shop. The tender closes for the new, two new trucks. I believe it's the fifteenth of this month. No. This, today's the fifteenth, eighteenth, so it closes this week. And the third surplus item would be the tractor that we obtained through amalgamation from the county.
Any questions? Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, Jeff, that's the old yellow tractor.
That's correct.
Okay, I, I'd move that motion.
Move by Doug, second by Wendy. All in favor of the motion? Motion's carried. Okay, 2019, 2020 comparative analysis of Stone Mills landfill operations. Go ahead, Jeff.
This is just kind of to update council. There's no financials with it because obviously we're still working under the current conditions. This is kind of just what council can anticipate when either the emergency's lifted or the restrictions are lifted, that the landfills will report back with the financials and the impact on any of our revenues and expenditures that we fall short on. If you notice in the spreadsheet, we have had considerable increase between 2019, 2020 in not only vehicles entering, but, but waste generated, recycling generated. Our brushes is, you know, up huge, especially at the Camden landfill. So any questions on that?
Go ahead, Wendy.
Yeah, I was just comparing the difference between the increase, and they are all notable, between paper, plastic versus garbage. Garbage took a pretty big jump, whereas the others not quite. Whereas the others not quite as much. And I was wondering if maybe it's time to remind people that when they are doing their big clean out, that they still have to be mindful that there are recyclables that cannot go into garbage or should not, I guess is a better word. Just, it's looking like a little bit of a a difference between recyclables and garbage, which is huge.
Yeah. So part of the, part of the discussion would be, you know, I think the original motion was to leave current operations in place until the emergency was lifted. But if, if council wants to have discussions around that on removing it early or we don't know when the emergency will be lifted, the provincial emergency, so.
I, I, I was sort of thinking the same way, you know. I don't know how long this is going on. I mean, before it was, you know, you wouldn't have to go in the, I know it's a bit of a financial thing too, but you got to buy back garbage bags. The fact was, nobody had to go in the store. Well, people are going in the stores now. So I don't think there's a real big issue of getting the clear bags back at some point here. That's just my thoughts anyway. Go ahead, Doug.
I, I agree, Eric. I, I think we should set a date. People who go to the stores and buy the bags, you know, give them reaction time. But, you know, I, I believe we, it's time to set a date and go back to normal operations in the waste site.
And I think too, if at some point council picks a date, we give them time to, you know, because you're going to have people come to the dump and landfill site and what it is. But if we could pick a date and put some signs up and let everybody know, I think we get this back. Because some points go.
How about July 50?
Sorry?
How about July 50? That's a month from now.
I guess Jeff holds that deal with, you know, your, your crew and advertising and whatnot.
That's, that's more than enough time. Our landfill employees are well aware that, you know, this is coming. And if we put signs up at the landfill and I would say three to four landfill days would be sufficient time for, for them to get the notice out to the active residents using the landfills.
I guess we don't need a motion. Everybody's sort of comfortable with that?
Well, we should set a date so that, you know, we can be people to wear, putting it on our website.
Yeah, whatever, relative 15th. Is there, Jeff, you picked a date and you've got council support, it looks like.
How about first of month then? That's 15 days.
I'm just looking at my calendar. If it falls out of Monday. That'll be the Wednesday. Wednesday is July 1st. So that's doable.
Great, good enough. And if, I mean, if people commit with that bag, I mean, they can work around it because there are people maybe on holidays or something that, you know, it's not going to know. So let them have a little lead, 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 lead at the, the dump. Okay?
That's right.
Your worship, your worship, just, just before you proceed on that, can you possibly incorporate that as a secondary part to the motion to receive the report? Just because there is a, a report previously existing on council's record that says that we would tie it to the provincial emergency. So we would just like a motion in place to, to change that date to whatever council determines.
You okay with that, Doug?
Yep.
Is that motion and also in the receive the report?
Yep.
If you have a second there, or maybe already did, Sherry. All in favor? Carrie. Is that what you want, Brian?
That's great, your worship.
Okay, Acting Fire Chief Thompson, 2020 Fire, Stone Mills Fire Progress Activity Report. Who's tackling this? Oh, there he are.
Hi, how are you?
Go ahead, James.
Evening, everyone. I'll be doing the report here tonight. So this is just a report to, to update the activities the fire department was going on since the start of the year. So I want to highlight our, our, our call response for the year so far compared to last year. So as you could see, when the COVID-19 pandemic hit, we, our call response dropped dramatically compared to last year. This was seen throughout the emergency services, police, fire, ambulance. They all seen a dramatic drop in call response. But as time went on, our calls increased. And most notable, when we look at our call volume, you'll see on the second page. So typically we run around almost a 50 50 split between medical calls to non-medical calls. This year, we're actually quite different and we're almost a 70 30 split in non-medical calls compared to medical calls. A lot of this can be contributed to the tier response agreement amendment that we did due to the COVID-19 pandemic contingencies. However, we've seen a dramatic increase in our non-medical response with, we've had six structured fires this year already compared to last year when we had seven for the entire year. So we've been very busy this year so far and it continues. I think maybe council could have heard the sirens going by Councilor Lallan's house as they were responding to another fire tonight. So it's been a busy season for us so far. So with the COVID-19 pandemic, it's created a lot of changes for us and a lot of decisions we have had to make quite quickly to ensure the safety of our firefighters. So with that, we've had to increase our screening of our firefighters. So we instituted early on that you self screen before you attend a call to ensure the safety of, of the responders as well as the people that we're responding to. Because it's, it's not the time to start screening once people start showing up. So we, we instituted that they need to do that beforehand. And that was very well received. And we had people contacting us when they were possibly symptomatic. We've had no one in the department test positive for COVID-19 or we haven't had any scares per se related to COVID-19. We've increased our PPE demands and what we need to respond to. So we've, it's been delayed coming in due to the worldwide shortage of PP, but we've, we've built it back up. And we're quite confident that we have the PP needed to keep our responders safe. On the capital side, we've received the quantitative respiratory fit tester that was approved on the 19th, May 19th council meeting. I actually completed training on it today so we can start using it soon. We moved ahead with our bunker gear fitting that needs to be done to be in compliance with health and safety. And we're in the process right now of researching specifications for a new pumper rescue for Station One in Yarco that's slated for replacement in 2021. Our hope is to have that tender out in the near future so that it can be ready to be received next year. As we worked through the pandemic, there was a number of initiatives that we, we kept going with. As of now, we have completely transferred over to Fire Rain Eco Gel. If you've heard this and seen it in the news, it's a bio based fire at water additive that can be used to, to further suppress fires. This is a change from our A triple F foam that's referred to, that's more acoustic to the environment. It's, there's long lasting health effects due to the, the life of the product. So we've seen in the past where other departments have ran into issues with cleanup and, and, and issues with the Ministry of Environment from using that, the A triple F product. So we felt that it was a great time to get away from that and go to something that's completely bio based and eco friendly. We've started our own Twitter account for the department, which we've been using to put out fire prevention information as well as information around the burn ban that was, was ongoing. That's been good for us to get the, the information out to the public. Will we be doing our water shuttle accreditation again this year? It's due every 10 years. So this is an accreditation that we, we do so that residents can use it to reduce their property insurance. We will be doing the fit testing. We're standardizing some of our apparatus. And we continue to work through the COVID-19 pandemic and complete our training, keeping in mind all the social distancing and infection control. And that's about all we've been doing this year.
Any questions for James? Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, James, the last accreditation was done in the village of Cavendish. Have you picked a location yet, Tamworth, or just I'm interested, that's all?
The last accreditation we did, we used the, the site of the Centerville Quarry. And we ran water from around the sort of Newburgh type area. We haven't picked a, a site as of yet. But the specific parameters that we must use regardless of where the site is in terms of distances away from water sources and timing and whatnot.
Okay, any more questions for James? Looking for a motion to receive the report. Moved by John, second by Sherry. All in favor? Carrie, thanks, James.
Thank you.
Chief Building Official Detler Draft Township Custodial RFP.
Yeah, so this is getting back to something that was being talked about in February. I believe John led the motion for me to to put this RFP out to find out how much it would cost to hire a service to clean our buildings. I, I kind of got put on the back burner because I'm going to have to meet probably multiple companies at each site to go over everything that, that would need to be cleaned for the township. So I, I put this together on Friday and I will speak to all of staff before I put it out in the papers for 40 days. But hopefully 40 days soon from now, we'll be able to come back to council with an idea of how much it would cost to have an outside company clean our facilities. Does anybody have any questions on the report?
Go ahead, Wendy.
This isn't a question, it's just a suggestion. I know with realtors, for example, what they do, because people can't come into homes and look at them in this state of emergency, they've been doing like a, a video tour, like a virtual tour. So I wonder if you did a virtual tour of each of the, the halls and then just forwarded that, those virtual tours saying, you know, this is what would be expected of you in this washroom and here's the kitchen and, you know, all of that. Then you wouldn't have to meet with all these people. You would just simply, they would review the virtual tours of the individual halls and have an understanding then of what the scope of the job would be.
Yeah, the companies were fine with that. I, I'm actually okay with meeting people at this point in time. As long as I keep, you know, there's six foot social distancing. I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm not anticipating there's going to be phenomenal amount of companies that are interested in, in submitting a price. But, but I mean, we'll see. I'm out meeting people every day doing inspections. So I'm pretty used to meeting people.
Any more questions for Jake? Motion to receive the report. By Kevin, second by Debbie. All in favor? Carrie. Any new, new business statements, remember? I got a letter here I'm going to bring forward here. I mean, it's, it's come to me. John, did you get a letter from the doctor's office?
From the Tamworth or the Newburgh?
Tamworth.
Uh, no, but Sandra was, was talking to me a little bit.
Anyway, I, I got a letter here just two days ago and I talked to Brian about it. I mean, it, you don't need to go into closed session because everybody knows what's going on with COVID. So I just read one line here. Inside, inside of this here COVID, we are asking for council's consideration for additional six month rental deferral. Now, I think, Brian, I'm finding, starting in, coming up here right shortly, I just have got the whole letter here in front of me. But they just want a deferral because they're paying their staff and trying to keep them all on. And that's more I got. I just want to pass it by council here and see if we have a closed session meeting. Does that, as of right coming up now, Brian?
Hey, your worship, they, as part of the budgeting process, there was a six month deferral that was approved by council. And the 12 month was originally requested. I believe as a part of the locum and the arrangement and the altered ability to see clients, it's just impacted the ability for the physicians to actually see the number of, of number of patients that normally would have gone through that practice.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I think Sandra said that Dan and Liz are seeing about a third of the number of patients that normally would have come through the office. And that's how they generate their income. So they simply don't have the money that they, they would have had to, to pay the rent. And I would move that we honor this deferral. This is the kind of thing that the federal and provincial government are giving businesses breaks on. I think we've pretty well got to do this for them.
Got a mover by John, second by Wendy. Any more questions or comments? All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Okay, any new business statements for any other members? Go ahead, John.
Well, yeah, I think it, it was a good thing that we had the the deputation from the citizens group and made that a special meeting. It obviously wasn't nearly enough time to go into any of the specific questions that they had. But I, I want to, I haven't got anything prepared, so I'm just off the top of my head here. I've been getting letters and Susan did want me to, to say how many letters that have been received. And as far as I can tell, almost all the letters were addressed to all of council. So I went through and counted them. We've got about 40 letters that are objecting in some way to the, the proposed livestock operation. I've had three or four letters in support and several phone calls in support. So you know, there's, there's definitely a public concern there. I, I think the citizens group is too hung up on the building permit. I've tried to make this point a couple of times, both in the meeting and in our early discussion about the XCG report. If they want to go ahead and hire their own experts, I would even donate some money, you know, I, I'm interested too. And if those experts turn up any serious flaws in the design, in the reviews that have gone, gone on already, then Jason and Jake, the, the building and planning department, will have to see that, that those errors are addressed. Up to and including, as Jake said, the halting of the project until they are addressed. You know, for example, if it, if it's found that somehow the, the concrete mixture for the barn or manure storage was incorrectly calculated, things will come to a dead halt, building permit or not. We can't legally revoke that building or not issue that building permit. But it's kind of irrelevant. So I would encourage the, the citizens group to continue to, with their investigations. I'm sure that Mark Slack would want to know if there was some incorrect calculation or major error made in his, in his engineering. He doesn't want his barn to fall down or his manure storage to rupture. So let's not get hung up on this, this building permit as some kind of Rubicon that once crossed cannot, cannot be gone back on. And the other point I wanted to make, the reason I asked Peter Doris, what would be a comparable sized dairy farm in terms of manure output to the, to the pig farm? He said about 140 cows. That's a fairly big dairy farm, but it's not outlandishly big. There's dairy farms in this county of that size. There's a dairy farm of considerable size and I don't know how many cows they milk, but it would be getting into that range right on the road between Strathcona and Napanee. It's much closer to a river and, and lake than the proposed hog operation. It went through without a peep. It's been operating for a couple of years without an incident. I'm not too concerned about the construction of a manure storage on, on the proposed site that has concrete reinforced with steel to a level that is unlike, and, and with a rubber liner on the outside of it and a leak detection system. It would take virtually an earthquake to cause a problem with that. If a leak occurs, it's monitored, remediation can occur. Odor, I've told various people, I've gone out to the Slack operation, walked up and down the road with the wind blowing from the west. 150, 200 meters away, you can't smell anything. I'm not saying there isn't a risk. There's a risk with everything. There's a risk with the gas tanks at the little convenience store right across the road from Beaver Lake. We're one out of control truck away from, from contaminating Beaver and White Lake with gasoline. One liter of gasoline will contaminate 2 million liters of water. Just think about that. That's a major risk right there. That's a major risk right there, we live with it because we accept that it's been engineered and located in a place that reduces the risk. So I'm not in favor of the hog farm. I would rather that intensive livestock operation didn't exist at all, that we could all farm in a, in an old-fashioned way with a few animals that get to root around outside. Watch your food prices triple. You can say anything you want about confinement livestock, it's a super-efficient operation from an economic standpoint. What I'm in favor of is a rigorous process, which was brought into effect after the Walkerton tainted water tragedy, which was about the same time as the original Slack application, for this, the property that's now being considered. And the Walkerton tragedy ushered in the Nutrient Management Act. And that requires, as we all know, studies, engineering design, third-party review. We've even gone to the extent of hiring XCG to do a review of the reviews. If the Citizens Group wants to do a further review and they come up with something, more power to them. But I think we've, we've jumped through all the hoops, the proponents jumped through all the hoops. That's really all I've gotta say, I don't have a concluding statement, it's just my impression of this whole process. I've answered every letter that has come, come across my email. Most people don't agree with what I tell them, some people have, have got back to me and say, thank you, I didn't know that. I thought it was the same situation as 2000, I didn't know there were environmental requirements now. So it's been a good process and I hope in the future, and not too long from now, we can have a general discussion about site plan approval. We can require public notice. Other municipalities, mostly urban, do require public notice of site plan applications. And the other thing I wanna find out is, does that 2001-80 or 83 or whatever it is intensive livestock bylaw, does it have any legal standing at all? My understanding is that provincial legislation always supersedes municipal bylaws. So it may even be the case that our requirement under that bylaw for site plan, uh, control and for hydro G do not even apply. We haven't got legal opinion, as I understand from Jason, we just haven't spent the money to find out if that's the case, but I think that's something we should determine. Thank you.
Well, I guess I could must say, I think John, I got a lot of emails and, I think I counted 45 or 49 there on my thing. But I appreciate you asking, I know I've been busy, I've been to, hey, I come home and I see the effort and I think all of, all of the council appreciate what you're doing there. But there's, and you know, I've had people come to my door, said they've been approached to, to turn this down and they've come to me and said, you know, Eric, we have no problem with it, so I mean, there's all different kinds of views out there. You know, so like I say, it's, it's just one of these things, we're gonna have to deal with and move on. Wendy, do you have something?
Yes, uh, uh, so I, 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 oops. Oh, am I unmuted? Okay. I did have some issues with responding to emails, so I have responded to many of the letters, but they keep bouncing back saying that they didn't get them, like that it was undeliverable, so I'll have to have maybe Christina look, at the setup that I've got or Brooklyn to see why I can't respond to emails. I, I don't know, just they bounce back.
I guess in, or, sorry John, just a sec, in, in our earlier meeting there, I, you know, with the council support, because I talked to Jason, them out there, the emails are coming in and people are, you know, expect report today to get back and a lot of the questions are, Omafran them should be doing, so I might hope I didn't speak out of turn, I'd like your support that, you know, they, our, our staff just can't keep on going, going, going on this, you know, we gotta, if there's something that urgent was upbringing through council, so I just, that was sort of brought on because I talked to them out there and we have other work to do out there. John, you have something?
Yeah, I just, I just was thinking the, the Citizens Group has asked us to delay issuing a building permit, I don't think we can do that. They've also asked us to, authorize experts that they hire in whatever studies they wanna do to go on to Mark Slack's property. We cannot authorize that. That would have to be, that would be up to Slack, family farms, whether or not they wanted to allow other investigators to come on the property. There's, there's no way the township has any authority to do that.
And first, the only thing, and that, and that, I agree 100%, the only thing I could see if, you know, you get one report, Omafran says, yes, this is fine, the Geo, and somebody says, no, it's not, and then, really where you go, I mean, because the way I look at it, we're, we're dealing with Omafran here and, we have, we have to put trust in these people to do the jobs. You know, that's what the professionals at, because first they get two, two people pulling each other, well, yeah, our report's not right, yours is wrong, where do you go? It's like you say, back entirely up to Slacks whether they wanna get involved with that. Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, John, I agree with everything that you said there and, and I, I do understand the concerns of the, the committee, the opponents against it. I guess, I just wanna say though, you can get an expert to tell you whatever you wanna hear. It, it's, it's always out there, there's an engineer that will say that's good, and then the next engineer that walks through the door says, oh, no, 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 can't do it that way, you gotta do it this way. And I caution that because that's the way the world is and, and sometimes you can just, you could go on forever. Well, I'll get another engineer that says I can, well, and now I'll get one that says you can't, type of deal, and, and I, I caution people with that because I've seen it happen before. So. But I, I don't disagree with what you said.
Go ahead Brenda.
Yeah, just to reiterate what Kevin has said, I had contacted a, a Geo scientist and, I said, have a look at what's on the website and tell me what you think and, and he got back to me, he said, how do you want this to read? I said, what do you mean? He said, well, are you in favor of this or against it? And I said, I just would like to know the truth. What are these submissions? Are they, are they valid? Are they accurate? And he said, well, again, what do you want? What do you want? I want the truth, and he said, well, you know. So I understand that and I, I get that. And I guess we have to have faith in the organizations and the agencies that have done the first review and then again the second review, so. I, I, I hope this next step is satisfactory to the public.
Go ahead Jake.
I was just comparing notes today from past building permits of other livestock facilities. Does anybody wanna hazard a guess? How many nutrient units are currently being constructed on Embry Road, not far outside of Newburgh? 333 compared to the, compared to the 208 nutrient units which will go on Mark Slack's barn. Compared to 177 nutrient units, which is in John McGlocklin's new dairy farm.
Good information. Okay Doug, you have something for statements for members or?
Yeah, I do. I think we have to recognize here that what we're dealing with is reaction, rather than being pro, pro-action. I mean, we, the, we're schooled, we're educated by the people we work with and others of what the rules are from the province and all of the experts. The members of the public are not educate, are not schooled in, in that. So they have to take trust or whatever, and it's human nature to question things. You know, on March 19th, and I'm, I'm not looking to start an argument, but if, if we'd have said, hey, we got some unanswered questions, and we need to get these answered before we approved it, possibly we could have alleviated a lot of the questions before they got to this point. Unfortunately, now we're at the 11th hour and we're here and we have community members who are, are not happy, they're, they're reacting and, I mean, we won't change it. Now, I, I just was going through the last minutes again, I was sure that John and I moved a motion, at the last meeting, but maybe it was one before that where on a matter like this in the future, that there wouldn't be public notification because, again, we're not talking about an operation out in the middle of rural farm country, we're talking about the operation immediately adjacent to a village. And the same happened with Newburgh. We made sure all the I's and T's were dotted before the approval was done there. And, you know, we could have done that here too, and I, I think going forward in the future, if another one come forward, we should keep that in mind, that's my two cents worth.
Anybody else anything to say? If not, we'll go to the confirming bylaw. Looking for a motion, moved by Kevin, seconded by John, all in favor? Motion to adjourn. John and Wendy. Good night everybody.